Okay, everyone. Today is Tuesday, February 14th, Statehood Day, by the way. Thank you for attending and braving the elements. Kind of connects with the old Climis study we're going to be listening to shortly. So this is a Prescott City Council Study Session. A roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
President.
Mayor Protemontoya.
Here.
Councilwoman Cantelmi.
Here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
And Councilman Tenney.
Yes.
All are present.
Very good. I think we will start off the discussion with a presentation from Protect. I mean, for resilience of our towns, environment, climate, and tourism, releasing the Climate Risk Assessment for Prescott.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of City Council. I'm Patrick Grady with Protect Campaign and the Gavapi Climate Change Coalition. Good to be back before you. I am a citizen of Prescott at 943 West Rossar Street. So it's been quite a journey since we kicked off the Protect Campaign last July to today's seminal presentation of the Quad Cities Climate Profile, as well as the Local Climate Action Options Paper. We're so grateful for the support from City Council and the leadership that you provided at the beginning and throughout the process, including your seven-to-zero vote on May 24th to actually authorize and approve moving forward on the Climis Quad Cities Climate Profile. We had a working group, as you know, that participated in the review of both documents, and their work was invaluable. You can find all their names and organizations that they represented in the preface to the profile. And of course, a shout-out to all of our Protect supporters that were the grassroots backbone of our campaign. So I'm going to take one moment. Please stand up if you are a part of the working group or the Protect Campaign. Thank you.[138.16][138.16][applause] Much love on Valentine's Day, and much thanks. Finally, wow, we wouldn't be here today without Climis and their team leader on this study, Dr. Allison Meadow. Their willingness to meet and collaborate with our working group monthly meeting since August was really above and beyond. Their insights were helpful, their flexibility with several sections of the profile is deeply appreciated. And remember, they did this for free for the region. With that, it's our honor to introduce and welcome back to City Council our friend and partner, Dr. Allison Meadow of Climis, via the Internet.
Thank you. And I want to say thank you so much to the City Council. I realize that you have been moving back to in-person only, and so I just want to express my appreciation for allowing me to appear remotely today. Unfortunately, just travel schedules being what they are, I was just not able to be there in person. So I greatly appreciate your flexibility. And I believe, Patrick, I was going to run the slides.
Yes, we are.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, just wanted to make sure. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Patrick. Good teamwork. So as Patrick said, my name's Allison Meadow. I'm an Associate Research Professor at University of Arizona, and I'm with the Climate Assessment for the Southwest, Climis. And we were, as Patrick said, we were invited by the Gavapi Climate Change Coalition and the Protect Campaign to develop this report for the Quad Cities region, summarizing the current and future climate of the Quad Cities as part of broader local efforts to understand these climate changes and impacts in the region, and to spur some of the locally relevant strategies to respond to some of these changes. So it's been lovely to work with such a dedicated group of citizens. A real treat. Next slide, please, Patrick. Climis Climate Assessment for the Southwest is a group of researchers. We are based at University of Arizona and also New Mexico State University. We cover both states. Our mission is to work with our partners to improve the ability of our region's social and ecological systems to respond to and really thrive in variable and changing climates, which we are all experiencing. We have been around since 1998, and we are funded through the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration's Climate Adaptation Partnerships Program. And I've just put our URL up there if you'd like to check us out a little bit more. The goal of this series of community climate profiles, and I should say Prescott and the Quad Cities area, this is the last in our series. We've been working on these for a few years. And our goal was really to fill a gap that many of our partner communities in the region had identified. We found that many decision-makers were looking for climate data that was specific to their area and an understanding of the kinds of impacts that they were likely to experience, given some of the climatic changes we're seeing. And we really framed this as a good first step for our communities in the region. We can summarize this data. You can take the climate data and begin that process of figuring out what that means for very specific local regions. Look at local vulnerabilities and strengths, and help communities build toward a climate adaptation plan. So you can kind of think of these profiles as one of the foundation stones in a larger planning process. We always take great pains to stress decisions about -- oh, we can still go back. One, back one. Decisions about strategies, plans, and actions are the communities to make. We're here as a resource. We're here to provide some of the background. But our goal with this report was really just to provide that robust information, include some resources and ideas that can inform your local actions and decisions. So the profiles include a summary of long-term temperature and precipitation data, our current climate trends, looking at climate change at a community scale, a summary of some general impacts to the region that we expect with some of the climatic changes. And then we provide as a resource some examples of possible adaptation strategies that work well in general in the region as sort of a menu and some ideas to spur local conversation. And this is where the working group has really taken things and run with it in a wonderful way. Okay, thank you, Patrick. Next slide. So this was the study area that we used after some conversations, including the City Council, to focus on the Prescott Active Management Area. It encompasses all four of the Quad Cities, and it's something that our understanding was in the region. This is sort of a decision scale. This is an area that people are used to looking at. When we talk about the climate impacts, you know, those tend to be, the studies that have already been done, tend to be at a broader scale. So they are a little bit more general. So you'll see in that report that we're speaking a little bit more generally, but it applies to the smaller area that we're focusing on. Okay, thanks. Next slide. So let's take a look at where we have been in the past and where we seem to be right now. Next slide. This is taking a look at the instrumental record of, we have temperature and precipitation, goes all the way back to 1895. So we have this really nice, long dataset here. And each one of these little peaks is a year in the record. Throughout the report and throughout this presentation, I'm going to be using a reference period that's up there at the top, 1961 to 1990. It's a 30-year period. That's the period that the National Climate Assessment has used in its most recent edition. So it gives us just a point of reference to explore, to understand current changes, and then put some of the historic data in context. And it makes it quite easy to compare your Quad Cities data to lots of other communities around the country because so many are using the same reference period. So I just wanted to explain that. So this long-term, this reference-period average, just a hair under 49 degrees. So annual average temperature is taking the average of the highest temperature of the day, the lowest temperature of the day, and then calculating that for the entire year. You see lots of ups and downs. We have years that are warm, we have years that are cold. But if, Patrick, if you'll hit that button one more time, what we're seeing recently, particularly in the last, say, 20-ish years, almost every single year is above that long-term average, and we sort of see that trend upwards. And that's where we start to, you know, things start to be a little bit concerning. It's that we expect to see lots of ups and downs, but we don't, you know, you don't want to see that constant rise, and that's where we've been. So the next slide summarizes for the same time scale the precipitation and that long-term, the long-term data, going again, all the way back to 1895. Using that reference period, this region sees about 18 inches of rain on average for that year. But of course, as we all know, in this part of the world, we have lots and lots of ups and downs. We have wet years, we have dry years, and we have long periods of each. The highest year on record was 1905, when the region saw almost 40 inches of rain. And the lowest was 1956 with only eight inches. So anything with a blue bar is above that average. Anything with a sort of brownish-yellow bar is below. And the colored-in squares are slightly longer periods, longer stretches of either above-average precipitation or below. Above average, we think, we call those pluvials, and the below-average drought. And you can see, most recently, you know, this area has really been in a drought since the mid-1990s. And that's for the whole state as well. All right. So that's just to set the background for you in order to now take a look at what we're seeing moving forward with some of those anticipated changes. So we can do the next slide. So what we do to look forward is use the same tools that are used by people like the National Climate Assessment, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change. We use climate models. In this case, we're using some data that has already been down scaled so that we can look more closely at particular areas, like we outlined for the Quad Cities. I want to get, just do a real quick background so that the data makes sense because you're going to see similar things moving forward. The Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change uses a set of four scenarios to understand likely futures. And those, each scenario is based on amount of greenhouse gas emissions. And so they can take that scenario of greenhouse gas emissions, put it into a computer-based model that models the Earth's atmosphere, and see how temperature and precipitation changes, given those. So they've been using a set of four. In this report, we're relying on two. The first one, it's got a very exciting name, RCP 8.5, Representative Concentration Pathways. Again, that just means how much greenhouse gases are we sort of assuming in this scenario? That's the higher emission scenario. That's closer to where we are right now in terms of greenhouse gas emissions. The other scenario that is really important to look at is 4.5. And that's a lower emission scenario. That makes the assumption that in about, in the year 2040, we're going to see a real policy shift and see a big change in the amount of greenhouse gas emissions. And that, of course, then changes the projections of warming and climate change. So again, we're going to use both of those scenarios throughout this report. In this case, so we're looking at that annual average temperature. We saw from before, the long-term average is about 54 degrees for the Quad Cities area. And that's projected to climb about four to five degrees by the year 2050. That's that first purple circle is about 2050. So about four degrees with the lower emission scenario, five degrees with the higher emissions. And then we see a real divergence between the two of them. The lower emission scenario by the end of the century is projecting about a six-degree increase, so 54 to about 60 degrees on average. That higher emission scenario has it going possibly as high as 11 degrees warmer than that long-term average. So we'd be looking at about 65 degrees as an average by the end of the century, using that higher emission scenario. So next slide looks at, this is just another way to think about that warming trend, days above 95 degrees. And that's pretty hot for that central and northern Arizona. It's, you know, down in Tucson, we go, 95. But 95 is a good threshold to think about, sort of, the impacts of heat. So in the long-term record, the Quad Cities area averaged about eight days a year above 95 degrees. More recently, that's been closer to about 20 days a year above 95 degrees. The projections, using those two different scenarios, has a change by the end of the century, oh, sorry, by mid-century, by 2050, 35 to 40 days above 95 degrees. And by the end of the century, 50 degrees for the lower, 50 days per year above 95 for the lower emission scenario, as many as 95 for that higher emission scenario. But again, by the end of the century. So it's a pretty significant change in the character of the climate for the Quad Cities. One more way to look at that on the next slide, Patrick, is thinking about those cold days. So again, that average for the area is about 133 days where the low temperature dips to 32 degrees or colder. And this is unfortunately the only one where we see, you know, a decrease. We're going the wrong direction with these, too. So by 2050, the projections say about 95 to 100 days of those cold temperatures, so, you know, losing 35, 40-ish days of cold temperatures. And by the end of the century, maybe only 55 or as few as 55 days with that higher emission scenario, where we get those cold temperatures. And that has implications for snow and the kinds of precipitation that we're seeing in the area. Okay, the next slide. So speaking of precipitation, this is where things get a little bit tricky. The precipitation in our area in general, in the Southwest, is tough to capture well in those climate models because it's so localized. Our North American monsoon in particular makes it hard to get a handle on projections. So in general, we think about not a lot of change in annual average precipitation. So we're going to probably stick at about that 18 inches a year that we've been seeing. But because a warm atmosphere holds more moisture, we're starting to see some changes in the character of the precipitation. Projections are showing an additional 10 to 20 days per year without precipitation at all. The area right now gets about 265 days of dry days with no precipitation. Could be seeing 275, 280 days. So fewer storms overall, fewer days with precipitation, but the same amount of precipitation, which means it's more extreme when it does arrive. That warming trend tells us that the precipitation is more likely to fall as rain instead of snow, and that the snow line is retreating to higher elevations. And then the warming temperatures also mean that there's more evaporation of surface water and more transpiration from plants, so we're seeing drier soils. So the character and the effectiveness of the precipitation is changing, even if it might be that same, about 18 inches a year. Okay, next slide. We're just, I'm going to just walk through, again, these are some general impacts that are likely in the region, things really to be aware of as you start to think about how the Quad Cities want to respond and take some action. So these are general, but they're important things to keep in mind as you move forward. Okay, the next slide. So in human health, you can just click through these, Patrick. There's a few different bullets here. Extreme heat places a lot more stress on the body, especially when we're not seeing nighttime temperatures fall enough to cool the body at night. Particularly vulnerable are older adults, children, people who work outside, people with chronic illnesses, and those who are socially isolated. So just that population is really important to think of as you start thinking about those days above 95 degrees and those, the extreme temperatures. The next one. So air quality is another thing that is impacted by these rising temperatures. In particular, ground-level ozone is affected by heat and sunlight. Wildfires, which unfortunately you are all very familiar with, can create more particulate matter, 2.5. And then those dust storms, when we start to see those extreme storms, they kick up higher winds, and we get more particulate matter, 10. These, again, are stressors for, particularly for vulnerable populations, but for everyone on the lungs. We're also seeing increasing risk of some vector-borne diseases, particularly West Nile virus. This is because the longer mosquito season, warmer temperatures, longer mosquito season, and we get a greater prevalence of things like West Nile virus. Okay, and the next slide. Oh, sorry, one more. And then, yeah, this is really important to think about, mental health as well. People who are exposed to climate-related disasters, flooding, heat, wildfire, can have some mental health impacts, post-traumatic stress disorder, depression, and even just general anxiety due to some of these ongoing stresses. So forest health impacts, again, is something that I think a lot of people in your region are already well aware of. We've got insect stress from heat, and then the lack of moisture, that drying soil means that the tree growth is stunted, and then it is less able to respond and fight off those insects. Yeah, drought-stressed forests are more vulnerable as we go. So we have sort of compounding forest health impacts from the heat, and then those longer insect seasons. So things to be aware of. And again, wildfires. We were already seeing more wildfires. We're sort of catching up from past policy that limited, that allowed additional fuel to build up in our forests. And so that yellow bar there is the wildfires we would anticipate, even with no changes to the climate. We were already seeing some increases. And then on top of that is the additional wildfires that are coming about because of the additional heat and the additional insect stress and the drought. So we're really seeing an increase in wildfires. This analysis is estimating that the area burned by wildfire across the Western United States in this period from 1985 to 2015 had burned, basically, it's double what we would have expected without climate change. Things to consider, human starts of wildfire nationwide are increasing, but in the Southwest, we're still seeing lightning strikes are the more common one. But keeping in mind that that human, more, you know, people are out, and therefore, we get more human starts. And the number of homes in the wildland urban interface is increasing every year nationwide. So we've got more homes, infrastructure, and people that are at risk from the fires. Next slide is flooding. So again, as we said, you know, the same amount of precipitation but falling in more extreme storms means that areas that are already vulnerable to flooding are going to potentially see even more. They may flood more often, they may have bigger floods. So anything that you're already seeing, expect more of. And then that combination of more frequent forest fires and more extreme precipitation leads to more post-fire flood events. And this is when we get those debris flows coming off of slopes and out of the forests. And that poses additional risks to our buildings, to infrastructure, to people, and has additional risks for water quality because of the debris flowing down. So two things to be aware of, the nasty combination of extreme storms and more wildfire. Next slide. So in terms of water resources, throughout the Western U.S., that changing character of precipitation that I talked about, and this drought, means that we're seeing reduced aquifer recharge. So we're not getting the soaking of precipitation back into the soils to recharge our aquifers. The future changes in climate could reduce aquifer recharge in the southern part of the Western U.S. by 10% to 20%. It's really important to note that climate change and changes in precipitation is not the only stressor on our water resources. So we need to think of that in the context of multiple stressors, in terms of our use and the way that our communities are developing, but keeping in the back of our mind that we're just not getting that recharge to a really important source of municipal and home water supplies right now. And with that, I think, Patrick, I'm going to wrap it up because I really want to leave space for the Gavapi Climate Change Coalition Working Group to talk through some of their recommendations and some of the work that they've been doing. They've really started the process of taking some of this background information and thinking about it in a local context. And so, as I said at the start, these are community, and these are local decisions. And so they are going to kind of take the next steps. But I'm happy to answer any questions, if there are any, or we can do so after Patrick talks.
Yeah, so what is the wishes of the Mayor and City Council to have some questions for Dr. Meadow and the Climis Climate Profile?
That was pretty clear for me, that we're hotter and drier.
All right, then we'll head into the next portion.
Please proceed.
Someone help me to get to the next PDF slideshow. Sorry, I'm technically challenged. While she's doing that, I want to thank Allison. And you should know that we are also in discussions with Prescott Valley, as well as Chino Valley, about potential presentations on the Climate Profile, as well as this next report on Local Climate Action Options. I hope you found this in your package. If you've had the opportunity, I know from the Thursday today is little time to digest all of this. But both reports are really a wonderful resource, documents with links to all sorts of other educational information about some of the things that Allison has referred to. Climate Profile also has a lot of linkages within the bodies, so a lot of opportunities to explore what other communities are doing and what certain particular actions might mean. So now, as we move into our brief report on Local Climate Action Options, I want to introduce Dr. Greg Murray. Some of you may have met him, but I just want to give you a little background. Greg and his wife Kathy moved here to Prescott about two years ago from Holland, Michigan, where both were professors at Hope College. Greg is a biologist and ecologist. He was involved with regional energy, climate change, and sustainability issues in Western Michigan, as well as with the Holland Climate Collaborative. He's been such a resource and a valuable partner in our work on the Protect Campaign, as well as with the Coalition. And we're fortunate to have Greg and Kathy in our community. So with that, Greg, you're up.
Thank you. Again, thanks for having us, and especially for commissioning the Climis report in the first place. This is a really valuable thing for our community and one that other communities have been doing. And so you can just use the down button. So, yeah, soon after, soon after the Prescott City Council commissioned the Climis report to prepare the Climate Profile for the area, a working group comprised of about 20 people or so from local government agencies and nonprofits started meeting periodically to ensure that the region's particular strengths and vulnerabilities were reflected in the report. And we're really happy that Allison and the rest of the Climis people worked so closely and really accommodated our input. You could go to the next slide. As the working group considered local actions that might help to mitigate some of those risks that the report was highlighting, we paid particular attention to the options that served more than one purpose and that provided long-term benefits. And in general, we had an eye toward things that really served simultaneously to maintain environmental integrity and economic vitality and community health. You could go to the next one. So following on the ways in which the Climate Profile by Climis categorized the major challenges posed, what the adaptation strategies that we came up with as a working group really fell sort of naturally into these six general categories. And as that, well, we could go to the next one, actually. Yeah, so as we approached these, that, in that first slide, the first of those categories was in, you know, we're going to call that first category Water Resources. And what we want to do is, we just want to highlight a few of these things that really sort of, like we said before, that on the first slide, that document has over 40 of these different options. We just want to highlight a couple of those in each of those six categories. And probably those are things that we've really thought of as being options that had a lot of potential for fairly for fairly large impacts that, that we might consider pursuing first. First of all, so the, the water resources, promoting use of water-efficient appliances and rainwater harvesting and, and, and low-impact watering systems and so forth in new residential and commercial developments makes really good sense to us. And we wanted to, to think about those in terms of, of ways in which both government and private industry could really facilitate these things, either through highlighting their, their importance for homeowners or prospective buyers, or even for incentives from utilities. Some of those are already being implemented, like in the city of Prescott, for rainwater harvesting. There's already an incentive for doing that. Secondly, we thought that managing stormwater is a real untapped resource, if you'll forgive that, that pun, or untapped resource in a way, because all new developments have to have stormwater mitigation built into them. And in a way, we're not using those perhaps as, as, as effectively as we could be for recreational and wildlife habitat and aquifer recharge as we might be able to in the future. You could go to the next one. This, this small figure here that we borrowed from the Fire Adapted Communities website highlights a bunch of smart policies, and you can't really see them there, but you can visit that website to, to see these, that will reduce the incidence of wildfires, to reduce the impacts of those that do eventually occur and to speed post, post-fire recovery. We also note that our own fire chief will be discussing some of these in the next portion of the study session, and we're grateful for his participation in, in the working group. We'd also note that, that it's important to our community to maintain and enhance healthy forests and grasslands, in part because they're so important for the quality of life here, but also because they really serve through, through ecotourism to generate a lot of economic benefits for our community. Next one. So as far as flooding is concerned, with, with more of our rain projected to fall in fewer events, especially following wildfire, flooding is a, is an increasing source of concern for our area. Green infrastructure, as it's discussed here, is, refers to engineering and, and, and ecosystem management policies that can lessen the damage from flooding and turn stormwater into a more valuable resource for both municipal use and for aquifer recharge and for wildlife habitat. So there's a lot of resources there that, that, that we've referred to that are being pursued by other municipalities and other communities throughout the, the, the country, that some of which could be usable here under fairly, in fairly short order. So Patrick, you want to take over here for the last couple?
Thank you. So you'll see energy use was one of our other categories that we wanted to focus on. Interestingly, you won't find this in the Quad Cities Climate Profile, but it is a primary focus of communities across the country, including towns and cities in Utah along the Wasatch Front, and their concern about air quality in their communities, to small rural communities in eastern Oregon that we've studied and looked at, and other cities in northern Arizona. Yavapai County, by the way, has a major section on energy use in their comprehensive plan, their 2032 Plan, highlighting the need to promote clean energy in order to, quote, "place the county in a stronger economic, environmental, and social position for the development in the future." Hence, we wanted to identify two or three things off of the list of energy use to bring to your attention. So promoting energy-efficient design features that, in this case, relate more to solar, but obviously, it's also true for water efficiencies. And we're really excited to announce that next month, in mid-March, the group nonprofit in Arizona based out of Phoenix called Solar United Neighbors, working with a number of our partners, will launch a Quad Cities Solar Co-op. And you can check out their website. Flyers are available today and being passed out to you at this moment. And a community-wide webinar will be held on March 22nd at the Prescott Public Library, open to all Quad City residents, and encourage them to go solar. The other one up there regarding electric vehicle charging stations. So it is apparent that electric vehicles are the wave of the future. We're seeing nearly every major car manufacturer, you know, putting, putting those kinds of strategies in place. But you have to have the infrastructure in place. And part of that infrastructure is charging stations. So we don't want to be left out of that ecotourism that Greg referred to in our region, just because we don't have enough charging stations. Another potential action are municipal energy audits. They're a good way for cities and towns to get started with positive cost benefits. And you can see that in this particular item, there already has been a, a December presentation of Prescott Valley by their consultant looking at projections of energy cost savings for their community. That report that we could potentially pick you back on should be completed within the next 60 days. Another element which is highlighted in the climate profile is agriculture and land use. And we just want to point out here that there's such a connection between growth, open space, transportation, and future land uses of our ranching land and heritage in this region. Initiatives like the Granite Dells Regional Park and Preserve, as well as the protection of the Upper Verde River, are so important to, to preserving ecosystem health and resilience, including water resources. So looking now at the future of ranching lands is just good regional planning. Finally, in our sixth category, looking at community and organizational capacity building, we found throughout these many months and working with different groups that we, as a region, need to build more organizational capacity, not just for city-town solutions that we're addressing today, but also regional solutions to address the issues and the climate impacts identified in the Quad Cities Climate Profile, as well as in the Local Climate Action Options Report. Our working group of regional stakeholders proved to be so valuable to our mission of producing those two reports. And recently, the working group has agreed to continue our conversations throughout 2023 and beyond to spur collaborative climate adaptation strategies within our region. So in very brief closing, as we pointed out in the introduction to our Local Climate Actions Report, and Greg alluded to this as well, there's substantial interdependence, intersectionality among all these various issues that our region is concerned about, that this council has already focused on and continues to focus on. So the suggestions we're offering today reflect just a beginning. This paper is intended to be a living document that will evolve. We will capture new solutions and new opportunities on our Quad Cities Climate Action Hub, and several of our partners are already present and active on the hub. And the suggestions we've offered today are really from a framework of, you know, what's a sustainable future look like? Solutions that simultaneously maintain climate resiliency that we spoke through the Climus Report and our own work, environmental integrity and economic vitality. As our Protect Campaign proclaimed, we're all in this together. So again, we thank you sincerely for your support in continuing to, to move this initiative forward from, you know, one of your retreats in 2022 to your actions later in that spring. So we're open to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Grady. Mayor Pro Tem had a question or a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to say thank you to Patrick and Dave and, and the professor who did the presentation at the beginning. It's clear a lot of work went into this report. And it's, and I spent some time over the weekend looking at it in a lot of detail. And I, I, there's a lot to digest there, and I'm still in that process, I'll say. But beyond extending my appreciation, the one thing I would suggest is that you continue to reach out to other elements to share this with. And the one that comes to mind for me is, there's two, actually, I should say. The first one for the city of Prescott would be the General Plan Committee. And I'm seeing Tammy DeWitt, our, one of our planners, who's working with that group right now, nodding her head. So I hope that you can kind of integrate and, and do a presentation, not necessarily of the scale to, to that group, but maybe, it depends. And Tammy, again, is nodding her head, so.
Thank you. We are scheduled for next week, councilman.
Perfect, okay, great, glad to hear it. And then the other thing I would mention is, in reading some of the materials, you, you talk about the Upper Verde River protection components. And there is the Upper Verde River Watershed Protection Coalition. And I would encourage you to work with that coalition as well to kind of get this report in front of the, at the very least, in front of their, their technical community. But I'm, I'm the vice chair of their, their board committee, the executive board committee. I think it would be great, great to have you come in and do probably a smaller presentation for that group, but still something, something of this scale. So just two, two pieces of feedback.
Excellent, thanks.
Councilmember Rusin.
Thank you, thank you, Patrick. First of all, I'd like to say that this presentation is not what we, what you would call activist science, okay? This is science that is rooted in data. And there's no political agenda here. Climus was established at the U of A in 1998, and it's part of the well-respected NOAA group. And this regional program that they have has been very valuable. And I would like to say that this assessment encompasses, once again, I just would like to stress, the Prescott AMA, the whole region. So moving forward, I think that I would be interested in proceeding with the municipal energy audit. I think that's important because it would actually probably save us some tax dollars in the future. So thank you. I just want to thank the whole team for all their hard work. And this is something that is very necessary for the quality of life here in Prescott. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Do we have any public comment?
We do, Mayor Howard Mechanic.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'd also like to thank Patrick and his other volunteers that helped out on this proposal, report. The, one thing, Mr. Mayor, we were out at the Courthouse Plaza on Saturday, and there was one council candidate who came up and was talking about how people move here, they study the area before they move here. And one of the things they look at that attracts them to the area is our climate. Unfortunately, they're not going to have that climate for long. I looked at the report and for my computations, if my grandkids grow up to be my age and come to Prescott, it will be like Mayor today. So if you want to live in Prescott for that long and have the climate you're looking for, you need to move to Williams. I wanted to concentrate on the water issue, issue here, the water resources. As you know, we have the largest overdraft of any active management area in the state. Most of the water we pump is overdraft. This report says recharge will decrease from 10 to 20%. In addition, we'll probably need to use more water for any exterior watering, which would increase demand. We'll have a lower supply and increased demand. So we've had reports in the past. As you know, there were two reports from government panels regarding the area reaching safe yield. Those reports are gathering dust. They've been gathering dust for over 10 years. One thing, this, this report had some suggestions. I would suggest myself that none of those will get us to water sustainability. The most reasonable, and I think the only reasonable way to get to water sustainability in the active management area is to have a district, a district with limited powers to replenish the water we're losing, a water augmentation district, which would be able to provide water to recharge the aquifer and be able to fund itself through a taxing authority as, as a jurisdiction. So I'm hoping that this council will not just leave this on the shelf, that they will move forward in a planning with the active management area to develop a district so we can reach sustainability. Thank you.
Joanne Olers.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Working Group, and guests today. I'm Joanne Olers of Granite Gardens Drive in Prescott, Arizona, and I am speaking on behalf of Save the Dells today. We applaud the regional outreach and solution-based results of the working group and partners, like all of you. As a former Dewey-Humboldtite, I do appreciate the regional approach. It's very easy to feel isolated in Dewey-Humboldt. And what you've done is, with this project, changed the feeling of isolation among the communities. This happens a lot between Prescott Valley and Prescott. I have family and friends in all areas, and they appreciate the cooperation. We at Save the Dells recognize the importance of grassroots efforts, climate resiliency, and of the good work accomplished by the working group and Climus as demonstrated today. Thank you very much.
That's all, Mayor.
Well, I appreciate the time and effort that went into this. And we'll look through the extensive report. Hopefully, we can find some actionable items in there. And we'll probably look at this at a future meeting or possibly another study session. So thank you all for attending. That'll complete this study session item, and we'll move on to our next item, which is the Fire Department Strategic Plan.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor and Council, hold your fire chief. I've got a lot of data that you probably saw because you had to pack it. And you know, this is a data-rich presentation. I'm going to do my best to be bold, be brief, and be brilliant, right? Hopefully, that last part is completely up to you. All right, with that, let's get to it. So we're here to give you an orientation to our updated strategic plan. Just real quickly, just reframe where we were at. In summer, I came to you to update you on our organizational identity work. I'll briefly cover that here as well. This is an extension of our 2019 plan that was done in preparation for our fire service accreditation. And as you notice here, and we'll talk about today, this is a significant expansion of that effort. The four things I really want to cover are here on the slide. Primarily, I want to make sure that we talk about the factors that influence this plan and that are facing not just the department, but the city at this time. are facing not just the department, but the city at this time. And then also, really, to get you into a very unique planning approach that's a little bit different than most strategic planning efforts. But before we get into that, if there's one thing you take away from this presentation, it's this. We are at a place as a fire department where innovation and prioritization have to blend with our traditional solutions. Just more fire stations by themselves, the classic, like, fire department approaches will not solve the challenge that we have. And so, we need to make sure that we use innovative approaches in our efforts here. This is something you've already seen this summer. It's been slightly updated, but I just want to call your attention to it once more. This is our refreshed mission, core identity and attitude, shared values and beliefs, and vision statements. And what's notable here is that 92% of our internal stakeholders in the department participated in creating this. 76% of department directors participated in this, and we had significant community outreach, including in-person offerings, which happened here in this room. And I am very proud of this effort, because this is now something we will be living by and already have. So, today, where are we as a fire department? We are at a crossroads because of community growth, the increased demand in services, and I'll get into that a little bit here, and obviously, rising costs. Those are partially inflationary and construction market-driven. As you can imagine, we are a capital-intensive department. This has definitely started to impact our ability to meet the needs of our stakeholders. And I'm going to have a little bit of data here to show you how that's impacting our residents right now. We have become significantly reactive. In my almost one year here on the job, I can tell you that we are basically in somewhat of survival mode, and that limits us in terms of proactive planning and strategy application. And this plan is meant to help us pivot more into a proactive approach. Our firefighters are beyond capacity. I can show you a few slides as to why that is, but they're really now stretched beyond their normal capability. Now, this is something that I don't have to tell you, because you live in this. We are in an extremely complex city policy environment. On top of that, yes, we are a primary function of a public entity, but you have far more wide-ranging issues than fire to deal with. And so, I want to acknowledge that as we get into that. And that's why I'm really calling for collaboration, prioritization, and innovation. So, let's talk a little bit about what's going on in the system. You've seen this staffing chart before when we talked about workforce recruitment and retention with police and human resources. You saw this chart before, so it's just a refresher. I just want to call your attention, though. You see the incident count in the third column. That has obviously increased significantly since 1995. 1995 is the last time we built a fire station in this community. So, it gives you an indication that what has happened just in that part of our fire department since that time. And over that time period, we have not really added much staffing. As a matter of fact, in our 40-hour ranks, in our support staff, we've actually had a net loss of folks over that time period. Now, how does that impact our residents? And I think that's the really important piece. This is data directly from our Standards of Cover Annual Compliance Report that we just submitted to the accrediting body, actually, today. And this is our moderate-risk EMS responses, which is basically the bread and butter of this fire department. You can see since 2019, when we first started into accreditation, you've seen a, almost, well, actually, pretty much a doubling, more than doubling, of those incidents that fit that category. And in that time period, you're starting to see our 90th percentile response time increase. Now, that time that you're looking at, the response, is hello-to-hello. So, from the time the 911 call is made to the time that somebody shows up to deliver services. So, that's inclusive of our turnout time, the call processing time with the 911 dispatcher, and our travel time. So, 11 and 1/2 minutes is definitely beyond what I'd like to see it. This is not really the venue for this. At some point, I'd like to get into a conversation about response time benchmarks, but I just want to make you aware of this data, because it does show a trend. Here's some other things to think about. Our force hire, which is basically telling somebody they have to stay on duty for another 24 hours, has approached almost 100 instances over the last year. So, that is a time when somebody is planning to get off duty, and about half an hour before shift change, they're told by the battalion chief, "You're up. You've got to stay," which means they have to rearrange daycare, and that's just another shift that they're working. 75% of our line firefighters carry some type of program management responsibility. And the reason for that is because we don't have a very broad 40-hour staff, and there's actually some benefits to that. But we also have significant programs that are held by those line firefighters, to include health and safety, emergency medical services. The entire program is ran by one of our captains that's currently assigned to the line. Also, our 40-hour staff are overloaded. You're looking at two of them. When Chief Knapp was hired, he was the operations chief, deputy chief, and fire marshal, all in one person. And in collaboration with city management, we were able to do a temporary operations chief this year. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. But myself, I'm also carrying the emergency management responsibilities, and that's just in the chief officer ranks. Our 40-hour admin staff are taxed almost at exactly the same level. CAFMA has recently gotten their ISO rating, just for the lack of glossary here. ISO is the insurance services office that sets basically fire risk, and that, in a commensurate way, then also sets insurance rates, particularly in the commercial sector. They actually saw their rating increase from a 3 to a 4, and that was directly related to their staffing impacts. As you know, our systems are connected quite closely, and that means that we're going to start seeing those impacts likely as well. We have seen an impact on homeowners' policies in Presket. Certain areas, we've started to see reduction, or even the threat of cancellation of insurance policies. And so, there are things that we need to consider here. That is not just because of fire department factors. I want to make sure that, you know, just staffing the fire department's not going to make that go away. We need to be more comprehensive. But we definitely play a significant role in that. The other thing that concerns me is that the opportunity for error and mistakes have increased. We are starting to see those near misses, or even some misses, that I can contribute directly to fatigue for our firefighters. You know, when you're at the end of a 72-hour shift, and you're doing calculation and drug dosages, it's a little bit more difficult than if you're doing that in your first 24. And like I said, that's directly related to those force hires that we're talking about in this slide. So, a couple of things on the core challenges. Obviously, we need a significant investment in public safety infrastructure. I'm not going to belabor that point. I know we've all talked about that, and that's been on everybody's mind since I've arrived here. But that gap is definitely too wide for us, simply to put fire stations within a realistic timeframe to close that gap. So, we need to innovate. And I'm going to talk a little bit about a couple of those things, but ultimately, this is the take-home point. We need to focus on outcomes. To me, building a fire station isn't an outcome. It's just one of the ways that we can achieve that outcome. And so, we can do a lot of other initiatives, some of them very cost-effective measures, to help us achieve the outcomes that we're after. This strategic plan is an outcome-based, outcome-driven strategic plan, and that's really the number-one thing. Really, the take-home message of this slide on the contributing factors is, we have, as a fire service, as an industry, traditionally said, "Well, we have a hammer, so everything turns into a nail," right? And that's usually a big red fire truck is going to fix all your problems. And there's definitely some good approach to that, but we need, as an industry and as a fire department, grow beyond that. The other thing that I really want to emphasize here is, because our gap is so significant right now in our infrastructure, we have a better opportunity than most communities to meet that challenge with that innovation, because we don't have a choice. We have to innovate. But because of that, really, the last couple bullet points here I want to highlight is, our ability to analyze the impact, advocate for change, and apply for implement effective solutions. Let's turn that into a real-world scenario. Currently, our fire prevention records are in three separate locations, two electronic databases and one paper database. That is obviously an issue. For instance, when we're trying to research community issues such as the PFAS problem, we have to look at three different databases. The reason why that is, is because our 40-hour staff was so thin during the implementation of the last electronic records management system, that there was really nobody to take the initiative to put that all together. So, it's not something you, as council, see a lot, right? But for us, in the administration side of things, it is definitely an impact, and it has downstream effects on other departments. For instance, when the city clerk does public records requests, we have to go through those three record databases. That's inefficient with an overloaded staff already. So, I just want to highlight, you know, and make it come to life a little bit more than just talking about a bullet point on a slide. Obviously, we are a valuable community asset, but we have a cost. We are definitely expensive. I'm not going to make any bones about that. And then the other factor that we have already identified, obviously, the PSPRS backlog limited our available options over the last couple of years to make gains in this area. And so, again, innovation is what's called for. We already looked at the slide. I apologize. I was duplicative. All right. So, the plan identifies seven strategic issues. Staffing and infrastructure, that's kind of a no-brainer in a way. Occupational safety, we need to look at our existing stations. They are fairly old, and things like cancer prevention and just having a good living environment for our firefighters needs to get looked at. And again, it's that evidence-based research. I'm not looking to make our fire stations Taj Mahals by any stretch of the imagination. But if you think about the fact that our firefighters live in these stations during their working life, or basically half their life, it is a significant component of how they are effective at their jobs. Data collection and analysis. We need a significant increase, as a fire department, in our ability to do data collection and analysis. I've already talked with city management about this. We're well aware of it. We're starting to have those conversations. But you're going to see here in just a second why this fire department is going to need the ability to access and analyze data in a much more comprehensive way. Community growth, again, I'm not going to belabor that point. We all know that both police and fire are really stretched with the community growth that we're seeing. Sustainable funding. We displaced a significant portion of the general fund. In order for us to have the capital conversations, that's obviously something we're going to have to get into with all of you on a policy level of how do we close that funding gap. As a fire chief, it's my job to recommend, and obviously, your job to direct us, but I just want to make sure that you understand we have that identified in our plan, so that you all, as policymakers, can help us with that plan component. Resource viability, that's basically what we talked about with our firefighters being so stretched. One of the things we need to talk about today, starting today, is, as you know, our SAFER Grant was turned down last year for those additional nine firefighters. We've got to close that gap, and we've got to close it fast. That's the viability that I'm talking about. I've got to have a workforce that's able to not just expand into the fire stations that we're going to build in the future, but actually staff the fire department that we have today. Workforce development, that's a big deal for us. You know about our recruitment and retention trends. Being a fire department and a destination employer is not just about a salary. It's not just about a benefit. It's about the kind of environment and the culture that we create as a command staff and as a city for those firefighters to basically self-actualize. And so, that's why I also want to make sure that we invest in our workforce that we currently have now, to make sure that they stay and that they're effective. All right. So, the plan, five strategic result areas, really quickly. I'm going to, I know you've seen this, and I don't want to take too much of your time here, but responding to risks. So, let's talk about community risk reduction solutions. This is not the fire station, so we're talking here about handling our low-acuity calls in a much more effective way. Reimagining a wildland mitigation strategy, and that's where the fire adaptive community mindset comes in. We can get into that conversation a little bit later, but right now, just to give you an idea, our fire-wise efforts are definitely good, but they're only one small slice of that pie that you saw earlier on the wheel in the Klemus program. I think the city of Presket and the fire department as a thought leader in this space needs to get into a fire adaptive community, and that's really looking at the comprehensive picture. We need to invest in partner and emergency management. We have great resources here in the region. Us doing everything by ourselves may not be the most effective way to do that. And then, obviously, we need to look at community health issues. That's top of mind right now, front page of the paper. I'd like to see us really invest in partnerships to improve cardiac arrest survival rates. That takes us engaging the whole system. The point I'm trying to make here is that this is not just the fire department working in a silo. This is us working with community partners to have an outcome effect. The stations, that's pretty easy. We need to make sure that they're strategically located. And like I said, we can talk about that a little bit more later on, if you have questions about that. That's, again, kind of, it goes without saying. We talked about the workforce supporting our people. The health and safety renovations that I talked about with our fire stations would be in this strategic result area. And the career development and succession planning also should be part of this area. I should constantly, for instance, be thinking about who's going to take my job, and that I'm developing that person as much as I can, and that goes all the way down the line. Performance measurement. We mentioned this before. I just want to make sure you understand, we've even now refocused our budget. I'll get into that in just a second. And we have an organizational performance management program in our fire department. Obviously, we need to fund that, and we need to develop that as we grow into this plan. Results-oriented performance measures are a big deal. I will say I'm a values-driven fire chief, and data is one of those values. It's not the only value. We can't just run the fire department by numbers, but we definitely need to see it at the same level as we do other values in the organization. And then finally, I am so proud of our fire department. I've mentioned this before. We are forged by values. This is a very values-driven, the oldest fire department in the state, but it's time for us to become also the most innovative fire department in the state, with a bold vision for the future, to meet this gap that we've got in our community. Real quick, just to orient you, if you're a visual person, normally, in a fire department, you kind of see the strategic plan and the budget at the council level sort of peek its head. And I want to make sure that you understand, I look at that more systematically. I look at the environment and the capabilities. The strategic plan is definitely one of those components, but those other triangles that form the base at the bottom there, the community risk assessment and the standards of cover, we were required to do that as part of our accreditation effort, but that's the wrong way to look at that. It is not meant to be a prescriptive exercise. It is really meant to be part of the planning component. So, the standards of cover, the risk assessment, and strategic plan come together to do risk-informed planning that then drives budget and performance. We do, like I said, need to invest in our people. I'm going to fly through this, because I want to make sure I leave enough time for all of your questions. Again, low-acuity call diversion, our station alerting, renovation to existing stations. One of the technologies that I want to call your attention to is, we're currently working in partnership with CAFMA to invest into what's called a move-up module. And that's basically taking an algorithm data machine that hooks onto the back of our computer-based dispatch system to reduce the number of times fire trucks have to float through the area to cover other areas and to actually decrease response times. The all-in cost for that between both agencies is $120,000, and initial thoughts, maybe that we could save 2% to 3% in that number that you saw earlier, just with investing into data. So, we haven't even built a fire station on that one. So, that's kind of one of the examples. Some basic facts of this plan, and you saw my math. I did my math, so I showed my work, as my teacher would tell me. $24 million in capital and one-time expenses, and $6 million in operating and ongoing expenses as a projection. I want to make sure I really emphasize this. This is not a budget request. We have plenty of options. We have plenty of flexibility, both in year one and year five of this plan. And so, those costs could adjust up or down depending on need and the initiative that you all direct us to take. We have restructured the department. As I mentioned, four sections, 15 groups. We deliver currently 368 unique services with roughly 70 full-time employees. That is pretty impressive, if you think about it. This plan is outcome-focused. It is looking at results that actually impact citizens and that are measurable, and it is directly connected to funding. So, the input drives the outcome. That's that logic model that we were talking about earlier in summer. This is the departmental budget structure. You also have this in the draft plan. So, as you can see here, this is definitely not a traditional fire department budget structure. Yes, there are components of this, like special operations and fire suppression, that look just like a regular fire department, but we're talking about, for instance, in the office of the chief, research and development and organizational performance management. It is time for us to get truly serious about the work that we do and the capital and ongoing expenditures that we have in this city. This is one program sheet, and this is kind of just to show you how data-driven we're becoming. All 15 of those program areas that I just showed you has one of these sheets. It's got a major purpose, a group purpose, and then it has results, which are outcomes, outputs, which is normally where fire departments of the past have kind of stopped to tell you how busy we are, demands, really what we are expected to do, and then an efficiency measure. So, we're able to tell you in those four factors across 15 programs what our response performance is, and not just our response performance, but also our performance as a department. I mentioned this before, the motivational energy that we currently have by the adversity and the gap that we're facing is going to be the fuel that's going to propel us through this. Like I said, I actually feel very fortunate that we've got this much of a gap, because change management is part of these initiatives. Getting a fire department, that's 200 years of tradition unimpeded by progress, to change into a new way of doing takes urgency. We have that urgency, so we're fortunate. But we have to take action, and that's really the key part that I'm really wanting to engage council with here over the next couple of years, is to say, how can we solve this gap? So, the question's really, just to frame the conversation, is, do you have any questions or concerns that we need to put into this plan? We've got about a month before we bring it to you for adoption. How can we partner, as a department, to make sure that we share that responsibility? And then, how about that need for our immediate firefighters that we're in a backlog with? We need to talk about working with city management, finance, and all of you to figure out a way that we can help our firefighters now with an immediate need. That's it. That's a lot. I'm sorry. That was really fast.
Thank you very much, Chief. I was a little concerned when I saw all three of your management with ties on. So, I knew there was going to be a big ask here.
That's right.
I did have one comment on one of your slides showing a substantial reduction in response time with incidents increases between '20 and '21.
Let's see here.
Maybe it's that, too.
Twenty and '21? Yeah, it was back further.
Yeah, it was way back.
Here. Is that slide 20 quote back?
Keep going.
Keep going. You tell me when to stop.
Hey.
Oh, oh, that one. Gotcha. I'm with you now. Okay, I'm following. Absolutely. Yeah, you're talking about that variation that you saw there?
Went from 10 minutes to a 9.9. Incidents went up from 3884 to 4720.
Part of that is the variability that we're seeing in the data. As that dataset gets bigger, or obviously, our reliance on the data is going to become a lot more robust.
So I know there were questions in the PRCC on when does a clock start?
Yes. Yeah, absolutely.
And when does it end as far as arrival on scene?
Correct.
So if you have some variabilities there, it can have a big difference in what your data shows.
Yeah, that is correct. So right now, the data point that's being used here is phone pickup. So the phone rings to the time that a unit either presses an on-scene button or announces that they're on scene. So that's the timeframe that you're seeing there. Call process variations, for instance, as an example, you could be on the phone with a 911 caller and still give pre-arrival instructions while the unit is already en route. That's not part of this. So it is literally by the time the unit gets dispatched to the time that the phone gets picked up, that's the call processing segment that we use. But keep in mind that when we're doing a total response time 90th percentile, we're not actually taking that component plus that component plus the other component. It is literally just taking, okay, when we do the data calculation from pickup to on scene, that's the dataset that we use for 90th percentile. So it's basically a process response performance rather than a single task.
Well, the way I see it, you have really critical immediate needs, and I think that's in the SAFER grant staffing that has to be addressed, you know, yesterday, really. And then the other ones will be more budget planning associated. But clearly, having 95% of all your funding come out of the general fund, we have a lot of challenges on that general fund. And even in the state legislature, where they're proposing to eliminate taxing on rentals and food, which both go into the general fund, which then provides public safety services. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think your immediate need is in that staffing area.
That's absolutely correct.
We've had a number of sequential years where we did get SAFER grants, and this was kind of surprising that we didn't get a renewal here. What's your analysis of that condition?
Considering only two fire departments in the state of Arizona got that funding, I would tell you we were in the unlucky majority last year. How that's going to change, I don't know. I've mentioned this before, and it's probably good to mention again. While SAFER grants can help us offset the costs of funding our fire department, it also is a little bit like buying firefighters on a credit card because three years later, you have to figure out a way to pay for those. And so that's really something that you want to go in with eyes wide open. We are going to continue to aggressively pursue grants, not just for personnel, but also equipment. So for instance, right now, we're submitting a grant for a Lucas device, which is an automatic chest compression device for a battalion chief's rig. I think that's a responsible thing to do. We should file for a SAFER grant again this year, but I think we shouldn't put our eggs all in that one basket. Like I said, our firefighters are in an immediate need, as you mentioned, and we can still file a SAFER grant while shoring up our needs locally now.
Very good. Let's see. We have Councilmember Rusi.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this report and this plan to our attention. This is something I think that has been needed for a long time, and it certainly has to be addressed. I just would like to comment that the public needs to be aware that we have a mutual aid and assist contract with other entities, and we cover the county, areas in the county. We have communities like, say, the Mountain Club, for example, that people think they're in the city, but they're actually in the county. So we are covering the county. We also cover our neighbor, the Yavapai Prescott Indian Tribe, and all the businesses out there and whatever happens. And we also cover the VA, which is a federal entity. So people need to realize the scope. And I still find it amazing that we haven't had a new fire station in 30 years, and probably not much remodeling done in the meantime, too. But you mentioned low-acuity call diversion. Could you kind of go into that in more detail?
Yeah, absolutely. That's the perfect example of the nail-on-the-hammer analogy that I used earlier. So we run with our type-one fire engines. Basically, anytime somebody calls 911, a big fire engine goes. We have the ability, both at the 911 center, to do triaging of calls and then actually sending a more appropriate resource if we lean into that idea. So sending a smaller unit is the most, you know, quick way you can talk about that. But there are systems now that are actually taking priority dispatch mechanisms and even sending things to a nurse navigator line that doesn't even require a response at all, but basically a medical professional and, you know, almost like a teledoc situation for very low-acuity situations. Anything that we can do to take that volume out of our system will help with that response that we're looking at here, that helps those type-one engines focus more on emergency response while we're still doing right by our citizen and giving them the right solution to their problem.
Because I think the public is well aware that, like, say, if somebody is overly intoxicated and needs assistance, we shouldn't be sending out a ladder truck on a call like that. And so as a result, you're proposing that we spend more resources for emergency medical services and have more of a nimble, like, smaller vehicle.
Yeah. One of the suggestions in here is a community paramedic program, and that is modeled after other communities that have implemented these kind of programs successfully. Mesa is the closest program to us. They actually have physician's assistant on one of their units to really get into that low-acuity call impact. But that would be one of the initiatives that we could look at to help us reduce that low-acuity call volume impact on the emergent side. You're never going to get rid of low-acuity calls. Those are community members asking for help. And so I want to make sure that I go on record to say those are very important requests for service. We just need to do a better job as a fire department, sending the appropriate resource to help them.
Well, thank you very much. This is, we have a lot of things to digest, and hopefully we'll give you more than just lip service. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ken Tellme.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for coming today, chief. And I think I mentioned it, too, earlier, how wonderful this report was, because as they say, the numbers don't lie. And when you look at this, that is a doubling of the calls. That's a lot of work for everybody. But I did love the detail. And again, I'm a big proponent, as everybody knows, I've said this till I blew in the face, about data collection. It paints a story. We need it. I think that just based on what you've done here, I don't know how you collected all this data, but we need this to move forward, and that's going to help us decide where we put our dollars. So thank you for how wonderful this report was. And I think everybody will take the week, maybe two weeks, to digest everything in here. But again, the numbers really don't lie. So thank you.
You're welcome. And to respond to that, this is the work of a lot of people, as I mentioned, just 92%, just on our organizational identity. Our command staff, our city staff, our IT staff, police, everybody was part of this project, and I can't emphasize that enough how much of a group effort this was.
Well, when you think about every single one of those 6,775 calls, how many people have to do what? How many machines go out of there? How many men have to get ready? It's just a process to get to the job. And as our population here ages, it's even more important to bring those response times down. And I'm also reminded of this House bill. I think I talked to somebody about the House bill that's getting ready to go through, House Bill 2418, I believe it is, that may mandate and legislate to us as a municipality down to a five-minute response time. Well, we're not able to do that. We physically can't do it. So it is House Bill 2418, if anybody wants to look into that. But we need to be geared for that and make sure that we can perform. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I, like everyone else, appreciate the work that went into this report. I would share the mayor's sentiment, and I appreciated the metaphor you made about the SAFER grants. That's really helpful to think of it as. It's a good way to do the short-term piece of getting staffing in place, but it's not a long-term solution. And I appreciate, I think it's great that we continue to apply for those grants, but it does seem like we have an immediate staffing need that we need to be responsive to. And I imagine that your budget request, as we move through the budget process, will reflect that, and I think it should. I will echo what Councilwoman Ken Tellme said. I love the data approach you're taking to this. I think in any private sector iteration, this would be a given. And so the fact that you're bringing this to place, you just don't know, data tells you the story of where you are, and it also helps you figure out how you are going to get to where you want to get to. So in the one-on-one we had, you seemed very highly in tune to that, and I'm appreciative of it. I think it'll drive to the greater mission that you're talking about of the innovation that we need to bring forward. And so I, for one, am just grateful. I think you're the right guy in the right seat for this time that's challenging, without a doubt. But your approach, I really appreciate it. You're thorough. You're data-driven, and we need that innovation. And I also, you know, from a political perspective, appreciate that you're willing to have some flexibility in the financial piece, because this is a, it's a big bite to take out of our general fund budget, especially when we have a lumiacs from the legislature on the tax revenue that the mayor mentioned. So I appreciate all that, and you have my support. We need to bring the staffing up.
Councilwoman Shishka.
Thanks, Mayor.
Olga, it's great to see you there.
Good to see you.
Having been really involved in PSPRS, I was wondering what you were referring to when you talked about the PSPRS backlog.
So it was basically that time period when we were paying down that backlog, limited other options for the city on other investments in the fire department. That's what I was referring to.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And, you know, we always talk about infrastructure, you know, that's relatively easy to do if you have the money. But hiring good firefighters is another thing. So tell me about how successful or not you're being with your new firefighters.
Yeah, absolutely. So first of all, we just brought a recruit class of five on. Amazing, amazing firefighters. I'm pretty proud. But it is also the last time, I think, we did a, what we call a traditional hiring, which is you walk in the door with firefighter one cert, and then we put you through in the house academy. We just posted at the beginning of this month for lateral firefighters and traditional firefighters. And out of that lateral firefighter pool, we already have seen significant interest. I don't know if you can give us an update on where we're at.
Mid-50s, applications.
Wow. So yeah, so there we are, two weeks in, and we just got as many applicants as we did for our last hiring process in total. So we're starting to see some results, which is good.
That's really good. Congratulations.
That's great to hear, chief. Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, chief, for your presentation. I really enjoyed reading the packet. It was so thorough, so well done. Very impressive. You mentioned something that I didn't quite understand. Just one clarification. You talked about CAFMA going from a three to a four. Is that getting worse, or is that getting better?
That's getting worse. Yeah, that's a great question.
I just didn't understand if improvement in score was like higher or lower.
That's correct.
Okay. And you're saying that's going to affect you. How is that going to affect you?
So the ISO rating assessors use exactly the same methodology for any fire department in the United States. And so one of the factors that increased CAFMA's ISO rating was their inability to assemble an effective response force, which is in our standards of cover. That's directly related to staffing. And because we're so connected, even the number that you see up on the screen right there is combined response performance. That's not just Prescott Fire. That is all 15 stations in the city limits of Prescott EMS response time, because we're agnostic to the patch on the shoulder when somebody calls for help. And so that is something that I'm concerned about. And in the future, our ISO rating could take a commensurate hit because we're relying on CAFMA to help us out, and they're relying on us to help them.
Gotcha.
So.
Well, I really appreciate your presentation, and like Mayor Protem, very supportive of your needs and hope that as a city, we can step up and help you guys. Thank you.
Chief, have you implemented this Quick Trucks option yet?
So we tried a pilot program of the alternative response unit, and that's a great example of why we need more staffing. Because we could not reliably staff the other engines because of our limited staffing, we had to make the decision to temporarily shut that program down and focus on using our staff to backfill the engines.
Well, that's understandable. And I have, I'm a little concerned here with the breakdown of the relationship with Blue Cross Blue Shield and WRMC. I think we can reliably project that some of our citizens in the area will not be taking care of their healthcare needs as they normally would. Consequently, their health will elevate into a higher acuity concern, and their first response is going to be to dial 911. And you'll probably see the number of medical calls increase because of that. Do you anticipate that as well?
I would anticipate that also, and it's another reason why that innovation is what's called for, so that we're ready, even for the next community trend after that, since, you know, we've always got to be ready. So.
Well, I appreciate that, and let's hope that the investment team down in Phoenix can continue to maintain a fully funded PSPRS pension system, and we don't have to commit additional general fund revenues to backfill their inadequate performance. I don't know, how long can I hold my breath? I really, I hate to even bring up the concept of a public safety tax, but I think as we continue to see more and more challenges to our general fund, as we continue to grow, and as the residents continue to utilize 911 and expect to have adequate response times, we're going to have to be able to find some more revenue to be able to provide those services. So even though the Mayor Protem was mentioning the fact that it's funny how some of those taxes, when they start, they never go away, at least they'll be gone for a year or so. But, you know, that's what happens when we're almost completely relying on a transaction privilege tax to fund our public services, our public safety services. And we're highly, highly restricted in property tax to backfill that. And then when we have the state legislature coming up with new plans on how to reduce that funding, it really puts us between a rock and a hard place. So I hope I don't look like a nail with your hammer, but these are substantial budget questions we're going to have to wrestle with and come up with a solution that's in the best interest of the community. Councilman Shishka, are you back up?
No, sir. I tried to turn it off, and it wouldn't go off.
There you go. Do we have any public comments? I appreciate your presentation. I was very impressed with all 160 pages. And even though you got three ties on, it wasn't that bad.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I think our study session now is complete. So the study session is adjourned, and we'll be back in a half an hour. Enjoy your break.